We're going to open the meeting at seven by my watch. This clock is never correct, so we will start at seven. Welcome to the Harwich Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing this Wednesday, May 29, 2019, here at the Griffin Meeting Room, Harwich Town Hall. We will hear the cases that are on our agenda, one at a time, at the appropriate time. I will invite the public to make any comments they may have on the cases. I will ask the board to introduce themselves, please. Jim Hilliard.
Kathleen Muller.
Dean Hederstedt. Dave Ryer.
Al Donahue.
James Armstrong.
And Shayla Delaney, Secretary.
Okay, and I just need to advise everybody, we are being video recorded, and the hearing will be posted on the Channel 18 YouTube Town of Harwich website. Okay, Attorney Croll, if you could, well, I'm sorry, Jim, if you could read the first case in, please.
Sure. Case number 2019-14. John J. Powers, Lauren K. Powers, trustees of the John J. Powers Qualified Personal Residence Trust, through their agent, Attorney William Croll, have applied for special permit or in the alternative of variance to build additions and alterations onto a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325, Table 2, area regulations as set forth in Mass. General Law's Chapter 48, Section 6 and 10. The property is located at 3 Davis Lane, MAP 7, Parcel J9, and in the RH zoning district.
Okay, we will have voting on the case. Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hederstedt, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Armstrong. I will not vote.
That's only four.
No, one, two, three, four, five.
Four, five, okay.
Childs. Good. Attorney Croll.
Thank you, Mr. --
There is correspondence.
Well, we're going to do, Attorney Croll is asking.
We're going to do the correspondence at the end of the presentation as per the request of counsel to cases.
Thank you for doing that. I'd like to put my best foot forward first before any butting, butters are registering any negative comments, so.
Just introduce yourself for the record, please.
Yes, Attorney William Croll from Harwich Port. I am representing the petitioners this evening. There's actually, it's owned by two trusts. One is the John Powers Cupert Trust, we call it, Qualified Personal Residence Trust, and the other is, the other half of the prop, other half interest in the property is owned by the Lauren K. Powers Cupert Trust. The property is located on Davis Lane in Harwich Port, down near Bank Street Beach. The plot plan by Ryder and Wilcox shows you the existing guest house and the proposed second-story addition to the guest house, as long, as well as the proposed additions on the Westerly side. They submitted the building plans by Yuroch Architects to illustrate the additions and the various views from the elevations. On all four sides, there's the denial letter from, so-called, from the building inspector who says that the, building commissioner who says that the new construction does not meet setback requirements for the zoning district, and referred the case to this board for review and relief. In my narrative, I explained that the proposed addition and the second-story addition on the Westerly side will not come any closer to the lot line than the existing bump out that's already there, that's 10.7 feet existing. So the proposed addition will be at 12.4, so it's not coming any closer than the already non-conforming structure, but it will be creating new habitable space within the 20-foot setback. The existing guest house on the east side is 16 feet from the easterly lot line. The footprint is going to stay the same, but they're going to build a second-story addition, again, which would create, this time, more habitable space vertically within the 20-foot So as a result of intensifying existing non-conformities by creating habitable space within the 20-foot setback, it falls within the purview of the Gale, the findings of the Gale case. We've got existing non-conformities, we're seeking to intensify them, and that's a special permit relief situation as per the Gale case, and our contention is that the additions and renovations would not cause a substantial increase in traffic, noise, odors, fumes, congestion, or the like, would not create a nuisance in the neighborhood, and would not be a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, and we would ask that you grant the special permit relief this evening.
Just one clear, one thing you can clarify for me, if you would, please, before I turn it over to the board. On the Westerly side there, the proposed addition?
Yes.
Is that only going over the existing dark-line structures, or is it going to replace them and be a two-story addition?
It's going to be, to the left, it says, "Proposed second-story addition."
Right.
So it's going over top of them, yes.
Okay, just a little confusing, because up above it says, "Proposed addition," so I wasn't sure whether you were replacing those two.
Not replacing. The front one that says 10.7?
Right.
That already exists.
Right.
And then they're creating another structure that's similar to that, a little bit north of that, where it says 12.4.
Okay.
You see that bump out like that, and then above it, they're creating a second-story addition above those two. I think, if you look at the, this would be the --
If you look at the waterside elevation with the cupola.
That's, that's what I'm --
With the cupola.
Right. Right. But that's facing the ocean, but you can see, on the left-hand side of that waterside elevation, you can see some of that that already exists, and it would be a second-story up above that, but I don't know, is that really illustrating it very well visually for you? So.
It looks like they're going to put a ground-level proposed addition, and then over that and over the existing one, a second-story addition?
Right. So if you look at the right-side elevation, all right, on page two, the left-side elevation above, it talks about the guest suite. So we're looking at the right-side elevation, as you're on Davis Lane, facing the water. That's the right-side elevation, so it would have the Gambrel-type structure, which is, and then, and then the part that connects that with the rear of the, let's call it, the rear of that dwelling on that, in that illustration, so that the additional, the new structure would appear to be, to me, the one that's sort of darker in that illustration, that's got the Gambrel-type face on it, and looking at this one here, down in the middle.
Right.
I think that's what you're looking at.
That's new construction, or is that existing?
That, I think, is the new construction part. That's what they're doing by adding on the, where it says, "Proposed second-story addition" and "proposed addition." I think that's what it would look like from that side.
Okay, but right now, the two structures are not connected?
Oh, they're connected.
They are connected.
If you look at existing dwelling on the plot plan, all right, that whole, that whole dwelling, that whole --
No, I meant, I should say, the existing dwelling and a guest house, are those two connected presently?
Because they're already connected, but then they're proposing a roof, deck, and stairs
Okay.
-- over top of the connecting portion.
Okay. I just found the plans a little confusing. I mean, they might be clear, but I just, maybe I'm confused, probably.
No, that's, that's an excellent question, but that already exists.
Okay, thank you.
They're already connected.
Mr. Hilliard.
Thank you. Mr. Croll, just to clear it up, the building inspector's letter refers to an application for a laundry room that he said no to as well. That, I don't see any of that in the plan or the request. What was, what does that reference to?
I'm sorry, my clients aren't here, they're away.
Laundry, yeah. It's on the right side.
On the right-hand side, where it says, "Proposed addition."
Mm-hmm.
On sheet A3, that's the laundry.
Okay.
And that would appear to be what we were just talking about.
Okay, so that will be new construction, that it looks like, on the, the ground level, on the first floor?
Right, where it says, "Proposed addition" on the west side.
So that's the laundry.
That's the laundry.
Okay.
Okay.
That's the only question I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Hilliard? Anything further, Jim?
I have no, I'm sorry, that's it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Ms. Muller.
I have no questions.
Mr. Hederstedt.
I have no questions.
It looks to me that there's no bathroom in, I'm sorry, no kitchen in the guest house, as far as I can tell. Looks like bedrooms, bathrooms, and living room, but the print is kind of small on, you know, the little drawings there.
I think, Mr. Ryer, there is a, it's tiny to read, but I think this is a refrigerator, R-E-F, and that's a sink.
But do we have a stove?
It's not, they're labeling it a guest house, it's not something they separately rent out or anything like that.
No, what I was concerned about is if we have a kitchen, you might get thrown into 325-51H as an accessory apartment.
There's been no mention to me of a kitchen, anything of that nature, it's, this is just --
It appears to be just a sink and a refrigerator.
-- an overflow to put more family in when they visit.
I think I would, well, I'm not going to vote on it, but I would suggest to the board, we put a condition in that there be no kitchen. No oven, stove, range top, or built-in microwave be installed.
See, I get conflicting signals from this board and the planning board.
I'm sorry, wait a minute, Mr. --
Go ahead.
Does it already exist?
Yes.
It exists?
This, this, yes, they're, they're putting a second floor on.
Right.
Right, that guest house already exists.
No, the guest house, but does a kitchen already exist? Do we have a microwave built in?
I didn't say that, but it, whatever is showing on that first-floor plan, that already exists.
Okay, but if it exists with a kitchen, I think they get thrown into 325-51H.
That's, I agree with Ms. Muller, that's just saying that there's a sink there and maybe, maybe a refrigerator, but.
Sink, refrigerator, and a linen closet is what it says.
Right.
Right, but I think if the board is going to approve this, we should put a condition that there be no oven, stove, range top, or built-in microwave installed.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, when I'm in front of the planning board, which I am regularly, all they're worried about with a kitchen, so to speak, is, or an apartment, or a detached accessory residential structure with a bedroom. We've had sink, dishwasher, refrigerator, no piped-in stove. That's their only requirement, is that there be no piped-in stove, plumbed-in stove. You get into kitchen being stove top, I mean, people can have a, traditionally, in what I've experienced in front of this board and the planning board, is they can have a microwave oven, they can have a hot top, they can have a refrigerator, they can have a sink.
No, I said, "Built-in microwave." We got this from the Board of Health a while back.
Yep.
They said, "No oven, stove, range top, or built-in microwave."
Mr. Chairman, I don't think there's any harm in putting that condition in, but I think it's redundant, but there's no harm in putting it in. I think there's no evidence that this is a full kitchen, I think it's just a --
No, but we don't want to approve it and then have them do it.
Right.
Is my point, because.
Have them do what?
Put in the stove, the microwave, you know, the built-ins, because then you've got an accessory apartment.
I have no problem with the built-in, as long as it says, "Built-in."
Well, it would say, so the language you've got up, Dean, "No oven, stove, range top, or built-in microwave." Counter-top microwave, perfectly fine. And the Board of Health gave us that as their working definition of a kitchen.
And what's the concern if, if, though, what's the concern of this board if there was a so-called kitchen there?
You would then be an accessory apartment, and you would not meet the requirements.
Okay, so I have no problem with, as long as it says, "Built," it has the word, the adjective, "built-in."
That's what the, that's what it says, "built-in."
Right. Because we had discussed this a couple of meetings ago, and we had all agreed that the countertop microwave is fine, or the hot plate, whatever you, I forget what you call it.
Hot plate, yeah.
Okay, hot plate, yeah. No problem with that.
And there are microwaves now that you plug in.
That's okay. That's okay, but the Board of Health said their definition of a kitchen is this one that I just read, that's where we got this from.
Yeah, "No oven, stove, range top, or built-in microwave is planned/installed." That's the way the condition reads.
So that's what I would propose be a condition, and I think probably we also would, because of this location, need that either the time restriction, you know, between June 30 and Labor Day this year and next.
Sure, we got, yeah, I was going to put that in, yeah.
Or, I mean, this is a big piece of property, I would also be happy if they just had all, no contractor parking on Davis, because they've got a big gravel drive and a lot of area.
That would be preferable, yeah, that'd be preferable, because you can't get to Davis Lane from the Bank Street side, anyway, because they have that gate.
Okay, I didn't go all the way in, I just went to this property.
From the Bank Street side, from the Bank Street side.
No, I came in the other side.
Right, from the Bank Street side, there's a physical gate.
Really?
Oh, it's been a subject of a lot of controversy over the years, so you can't go from that side. From, from the other side of Davis Lane, there's one more after this, one more property after this.
Okay.
But I was going to comment that you won't get too many properties that have a rear setback of 557 feet.
Right, I think we could.
It's a big piece of property.
We could say.
Plenty of room to.
Yeah, conditioning on, no parking on Davis.
That would be great.
Parked on the property. I mean, for the sake of the neighbors, I would suggest your folks don't do it during the high season, but that's up to them and their neighbors. That's all I have. Mr. Donahue, no questions. Mr. Armstrong.
No questions.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a letter from.
You have a letter, yes.
Yes. And this is the Board of Health to the Zoning Board of Appeal. I have reviewed the special permit or in the alternative of variance to build additions and alterations onto a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 3 Davis Lane. A fully compliant septic system is required. No variance system Title V or local regulations will be granted. A disposal system construction permit must be approved prior to any building permit application approval. That's the only piece of correspondence.
Okay, so have you been before them already?
The Board of Health?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
But we're fully aware of what that said and, and.
Right.
Know what the conditions are.
I mean, I don't know how big the septic is, but you've got a lot of bedrooms, so you'll have to deal with them.
Mm-hmm.
Anything further, Attorney Croll?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this petition, for or against? Hearing, no one, I'll accept the motion to close the hearing.
Some move.
Public hearing, second. Public hearing is closed. Discussion, Mr. Hilliard.
I, I believe it's somewhat of a difficult, a piece of land to build on and to rebuild on, but I, I believe the petitioner has met the standards set forth, not only in the bylaw, but the exceptions espoused in the Gale case.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Muller.
No questions, no comments.
No comment.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Hilliard, I think it meets not only the bylaw, 325-54 requirements, but also the requirements of the Gale case, just intensifying a pre-existing non-conformity, as Attorney Croll pointed out there on the west side, and it's certainly not going to be any more substantial to the, substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. I do think we should add those two conditions, but I'm not voting.
Mr. Donahue.
I have no comment, given the board's statements.
Jamie.
I have no comment, I think it has a, it does have a new proposed septic system in the planning, so, but other than that, no comments?
Okay, I will entertain a motion on the case.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The ZBA tonight grants under case 2019-14, a special permit based upon the applicant's submitted documents for a planned alteration or reconstruction of a non-conforming single-family residential structure that is in accordance with the Gale case, and there is no new non-conformity, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Because the property is located in such a close residential location, there'll be some no substantial demolition or exterior construction or substantial landscaping during the period 30 June 2019 through Labor Day 2020, or extended into the following year, 2021 through 2021.
No, 19 and 20.
I'm sorry, why don't we discuss?
30 June 2020 through Labor Day 2020, or 30 June through 2021, or?
Nope, 19, 2019, 2019 and 2020.
Okay, 2019 and 2020, sorry about that.
You also should let them, as an alternate to that, all of the alternate, no parking on Davis Lane.
Haven't got there yet.
Okay.
Okay, you're one step ahead. There is another condition, that there'll be no parking on Davis Lane during the construction period. In, and in the case of the guest house with bedrooms, a special permit is granted in accordance with Chapter 325, 140, with the condition that no oven, stove, range, or built-in microwave is planned or installed.
The only thing I would suggest is that the park, no parking on Davis Lane be in the alternative, so that they, either they don't construct during that period, or if they construct during the period, no contractor parking on Davis Lane, it all has to be on the property.
That was my understanding.
That was what we had discussed.
That's my understanding, they may, we authorize them to build, because they might.
No construction, no parking during construction at all on Davis Lane, and any, and any, that's it, period.
Correct.
Right.
No limitation on the time period for the construction.
Right.
Provided there's no parking on Davis Lane.
Yes.
Okay, with that clarification.
Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Did I hear Mr. Donahue first, Mr. Armstrong, okay. Any further discussion?
If I may, Mr., could, could the clerk read back that motion, just so we're clear on what the condition is?
The only condition that I am condensing it to is that there be no construction vehicle parking on Davis Lane during the dates noted.
And the kitchen.
And that the kitchen of the guest house not include either oven stove, micro.
There's no parking on the guest, there's no parking on Davis Lane.
I'm sorry, and oven, stove, range top, or built-in micro.
Okay, so you eliminated the time period, then, or just the flat-out, no parking on Davis Lane?
No parking on Davis Lane, flat-out, and of course, the condition there about the.
No construction vehicle parking on Davis Lane.
Right.
Got it.
No vehicle parking, right, on Davis Lane. And the other one takes care of the kitchen, et cetera, eliminates the kitchen.
Okay, all in favor?
One more time, just so I'm clear on it? I think it's simple.
Condition one is that there will be no construction vehicle parking on Davis Lane. Condition number two is that in the guest house, there will be no oven, stove, range top, or built-in microwave installed.
Probably should say, "No contractor vehicles."
Okay, not construction.
Not just construction, because there'll be painters and who knows what in there.
Contractor.
Yes, thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carried unanimously, special permits granted.
Who wants a second on that, too?
Okay.
Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hilliard, if you could read our next case, please.
Case number two, excuse me, 2019-15. James F. Drury, Catherine A. Griffin, through their agent, Attorney William Croll, have applied for a special permit or in the alternative of variance to demolish and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-54, Table 2, area regulations, and Table 3, height and bulk regulations, as set forth in Mass. General Law's Chapter 48, Section 6 and 10. Property is located at 11 Air Lane, MAP 7, Parcel A2, in the RH1 zoning district. We have correspondence, but been requested to wait until Attorney Croll's presentation to read it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William.
Let me interrupt before, I've got a very short memory anymore, on the prior case, on the no, you know, oven, stove, whatever, just make sure that only applies to the guest house.
Okay, I have that, that, the guest house.
Thank you.
Just a clarification, I'm sorry, go ahead, Attorney Croll.
Attorney William Croll from Harwich Port, representing the petitioners James Drury and Catherine Griffin regarding 11 Air Lane, and I meant to comment beginning of the last hearing, it's nice to see the full board here, it's been a while.
Mr. Croll, he's always missing.
I understand.
Well, now we have one absent, we'll have the same voting, let me interrupt again, I forgot that, Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hederstedt, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Armstrong, I will not vote.
Because during the winter, it was a little hit or miss sometimes, not so much with this board, but the planning board was having issues, trying, had phone issues, where somebody in Florida and, and the Conservation Commission had quorum, probably Historical Commission quorum, probably.
We do a much better job.
And this board has now, but never given me a lot of stress about whether you're going to have a quorum or not, so.
Only microwave.
Try to keep it entertaining.
We've been close a few times.
At least they got the four. So in any event, the petition is located, the property is located at the, almost to the end of Air Lane, down in Harwich Port, right where Sativa and Solis Gift Shop is, and you go down that road, almost to the end on the left. We submitted an existing conditions plot plan, as well as a proposed conditions plot plan, that hopefully, hopefully makes it a little bit easier to ascertain and visualize where the existing house is versus the proposed dwelling. versus the proposed dwelling. Building plans by Karen Kempton for the new dwelling, so this is a demolition and replace, it's not add-on and renovate, like the last one. The denial letter from the building commissioner says that the lot does not meet frontage or area requirements, and that's why it's pre-existing, non-conforming. So the main issue is the site coverage. So just to review the narrative that I submitted, the, on the northerly side, the proposed dwelling will become conforming. So right now, it is 19.6 on the northerly side, it's non-conforming. It's going to become 20.5, so we're making it from non-conforming to conforming on the northerly side. It will remain conforming on the southerly side, it'll go from 24.6 to 20.5, but it's still more than 20 feet on the southerly side, so it'll remain conforming. The proposed patio, it looks like, oh gee, that patio's too close to the lot line. Well, that's flat, level to the ground, so that's not a structure in the definition under the bylaw. It's a patio surrounding the pool. The front setback will remain conforming at 26 feet from the boundary of Air Lane to the portico on the front of the house, and the rear setback will remain conforming at 31 feet. So we are conforming all around, all four sides now, in accordance with the setback requirements of the bylaw. The building coverage is, the maximum is 30 percent, it will increase slightly from 17.8 to 18.8 percent. The site coverage increases about 10, a little bit less than 10 percent. So it's already non-conforming, that's why we're in front of you. Site coverage maximum is 35 percent, it's already at 37.8, proposing to increase it to 47.1, probably largely because of the patio. The structure itself, the building itself, in my opinion, seems to be smaller than the existing building. Where in the, the belly of it there, where the patio around the pool cuts into that, it's actually, looks to be somewhat smaller than the existing dwelling, but the pool is very important to my clients, and that's why they're seeking to increase the site coverage somewhat. My, not trying to put words in your mouth, but my experience with this board in the past has been that you're much more concerned with dimensional requirements of setbacks and somewhat building coverage as opposed to site coverage. That hasn't seemed to be a big concern, so we're hoping that it's not. And since the site coverage is presently non-conforming, pre-existing, non-conforming, then we are seeking to intensify that in accordance with the Gale case, and again, we would argue in this case that it would, the increase in site coverage would not be a substantial increase in traffic, cause a substantial increase in traffic, noise, odors, fumes, congestion, or the like, nuisance, and would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood if this relief was granted this evening to demolish and replace the dwelling. Thank you.
Mr. Hilliard.
Thank you. Mr. Croll, you made reference to the site coverage increases, 10 percent?
On the proposed conditions plan, it is 37.8 percent on the table, and the proposed coverage is 47.1.
That's more like 25 percent.
I meant 10 percent of, from 37 percent to 47 percent, that's what I was...
Ten points.
Yes.
Okay, so I...
Sorry, I hadn't looked at it that way, Mr. Hilliard.
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a 25 percent increase from the pre-existing, and it's, I'm sorry, from the existing, and then it's 35 percent increase from the required bylaw. I only ask the question because not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming. Maybe you can explain why you do not think that should be considered as part of detrimental being, that there's such a large increase in the nonconformity.
I don't think it, that that increase would cause a substantial detriment to the property values in that neighborhood. I don't think that you have, you have one piece of correspondence, Mr. Hilliard, from the Board of Health on this one also?
Mm-hmm.
Right. So my clients have already talked to the neighbors. I know the neighbor between my client's house and the water, he has a good relationship with them, they're not at all concerned with this, they've seen the plans, they've discussed it, and they're not concerned about any detriment to their property value. If anything, I think the neighborhood is looking at this as if this is a substantial increase to their property value, because you're taking a house, demolishing it, and prepare, and creating a new structure that all boats would rise with the tide with this proposed new structure, and the neighbor to the south is not concerned about the pool there. So no, the key words being substantial, no substantial increase in traffic, still a single-family residence, noise, odors, fumes, congestion, no nuisance. The pool, if it was an issue, I think the director of butter would be making some noise about it, but they, they're not. And on the whole, with regard to the whole neighborhood, it's not just a substantial detriment to one of butter, or an immediate butter, it has to be to the entire neighborhood. So I don't think that just increasing the site coverage from 37.8 percent to 47.1 percent, the site coverage, not the building coverage, but the site coverage, I don't think is a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Ms. Mueller.
No questions.
Mr. Hedersted.
No questions.
Okay, on the patio, I am looking at 325-18F, which talks about, among other things, open terraces, which I think a patio is probably an open terrace under four feet in height. It can come within one half of the setback.
It's ground level. It's not a structure under terrace, it's not a structure under the definitions in the bylaw, it never has been.
But why is it not an open terrace?
The patio.
Okay.
I think a terrace suggests that it's something above ground level.
Well, it doesn't say that.
And that's why, that's why they reduce the setback on a terrace or a deck to half the distance, half the, half the setback. But on a patio, it's never been considered a structure by the building commissioner for setback purposes.
Okay, I know we've discussed this with regard to pools and some of the other cases, but I don't remember what we, where we ended up on it.
I've been in front of this board with other pool cases, and this has never come up as a structure.
I don't think it has. I think the only thing that came up was maybe fencing and stuff like that, but, and the people, and the detriment to the neighborhood, but I don't think patio, as long as it's ground level, it doesn't, it hasn't risen, I think you're fine. But if it's, if it's up in the air, that's a different story.
Put a condition on it, it's got to be ground level, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Donahue.
I have no questions.
Mr. Armstrong.
No questions.
Anyone in the public care to speak to this case? Yes, ma'am, if you could go to the podium and introduce yourself, please. No, it's okay, take your time.
Yes, my name is Beatrice Tenno, and I'm the mother of Catherine Tenno, who is part owner of the house at 14 Pilgrim Road.
Hold the mic a little closer to you, please. Thanks, okay.
At 14 Pilgrim Road. And she had a question about the site coverage increasing from 10 percent. Is that, does that include the pool and the terrace? Is that the reason for the increase?
Primarily, if I can, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, if you could.
They said earlier, primarily, I think that, I think the primary reason for the increase is the patio.
Okay.
That's creating more site coverage where rain, water, heat get into the soil, and that's...
And does the pool, is that part of the increase also?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, just be careful of the cord there, please. Mr. Hilliard?
The building itself is, it seems to be getting smaller, if anything, not getting bigger. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Right, because it looks like, the way you've got, your clients have it squared off there, I mean, the patio and the pool is a big, big chunk of site coverage there. Mr. Hilliard, would you like to read in that one comment we have, please?
Yes. Despite the Gale case, and I realize that the Gale case has been used and expanded on and expanded on, I think, from my own point of view, I think the Gale case is being interpreted not in the best interest of, of building and rebuilding with respect to the fact, and I'm not picking on Mr. Croll, the 25 percent increase by definition, because you can extend a pre-existing, non-conforming use, I'm, sorry, structure, because you can extend it. That could go on, added for an item, you could, you could have 100 percent increase, if you would, over what is required because of the Gale case. I believe Mr. Croll has met the standard that is set forth in the Gale case. I asked about substantial detriment, because in some respect, if zoning is turned into the fact that you can extend something well over 100 percent of what its non-conforming nature is, then isn't that somewhat substantial in the use, in the practice of it? I'm not trying to editorialize it, but I believe he's met the burden on Gale, but I say that when I say it was reservation.
Well, I, I agree with you, but I think also, as Attorney Croll pointed out, we have to look at the whole neighborhood.
I agree, yeah, I agree.
This increase is not going to be out of scale to what's there. That, I kind of look at that, if this were on, I forget, one of the other cases where the houses were, are much smaller, and they were going to put this, I think that, yeah, that could be a real issue of whether that was going to be a substantial detriment.
Yeah.
Because now you're going to have the, you know, a huge structure in amongst all these smaller structures. I don't know, I don't know what effect that would have on property values. Do you want to read in the one comment we have?
Yes. The Board of Health, regarding the case number 2019-15, I have reviewed the special permit or the alternative variance to demolish and replace pre-existing, non-conforming single-family dwelling at 11 Air Lane. A fully compliant five-bedroom septic system is required. No variance from Title V or local regulations will be granted. A disposal system construction permit must be approved prior to any building permit application approval. And that is from Lady Canalia, City Health.
Okay, on this one, because of Air Lane, I think we definitely need the construction time.
Yep.
2019, 2020.
Right. Anything further from the public? I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Same move.
Second, Mr. Donahue, public hearing is closed. Mr. Hilliard, discussion of the case, I guess you've already said it meets the Gale...
I'm sorry.
...case requirements?
I believe that we've met the Gale case requirements. For a pre-existing, non-conforming structure to be extended, yes.
Okay. Ms. Mueller?
I actually did the arithmetic the same way Mr. Hilliard did, looked at it the same way, and can imagine circumstances in which we would not approve something with 47 percent site coverage. However, the specifics of this case, I think, justify it, and it, under the Gale case, and it's not a detriment to the neighborhood.
Mr. Hedersted.
I have no further comments.
Yeah, I agree with the, the prior comments, and I think there, there could very well be a case where the increase in site coverage or building coverage becomes an issue, but certainly not this one, in my opinion.
Not when it's just talking about a pool versus a construction of a home.
Right.
It's a lot different.
Well, yes, in this, again, that's specific to this case.
And a large patio.
Yeah, we'd have to look at the specifics, but, yes, I agree. Mr. Donahue.
I may stand corrected, but going back to Mr. Hilliard's remarks, we had a case a month and a half ago, in which a construction was done on addition to the property, I think it might have been a deck, I'm not quite certain, and it was, in our discussion, the property line on the west side, as I remember it could have been, was in conformity. The line was drawn through that conforming, making it non-conforming, and I thought we had received...
Right, because it created a new nonconformity, this is the case a couple of meetings ago, we now have an opinion of counsel that says extending that line would create a new nonconformity under Deere-Drick, and a variance would be required, but they're not doing that here.
No, okay.
So, Mr. Armstrong.
I agree with the previous comments. No comment.
Okay, I will take a motion in the case.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the zoning board of approves, hereby a special permit is granted to demolish and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming family dwelling. The application was made pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, 325-54, Table 2, Area Regulations, Table 3, Height and Bulk Regulations, set forth in MGL, Chapter 48, Section 6 and 10. The property is located at 11 Air Lane, Map 7, Apostle 2A, in the RH1 zoning district, and this approval is based upon the applicant's submitted documents for the planned reconstruction, demolition, and reconstruction of a non-conforming, single-family dwelling. And it is in accordance with the Gale case that there is no new conformity, and that there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Because the property is in such close residential location, there can be no substantial demolition, external reconstruction, or substantial landscaping during the period 30 June 2019 through Labor Day 2019, or that same period during 2020.
Can I have a second on the motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, special permit granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all of your comments. I'm sure you'll let me know when I cross over the line.
Well, it is, it is harder on the Gale case on a special permit to go over the line, as we well know.
Just as an aside, in between cases here, that Gale case, and I, we went through that with Mr. Hedersted last fall, the Gale case was a very, very small house on a very, very small lot, and they allowed it to expand, almost doubling the size of the house on like a 3,000-square-foot lot, and came within five feet on all four sides. It was a significant increase, huge.
That's why I said, to me, the issue isn't so much the percentage as what's the character of the neighborhood.
In relation, the relation.
If it's, you know, all big homes, like on Air, it's not going to have an impact. But if you have little bitty homes, or you're going to put up some gargoyle, you know...
McMansion.
Well, not even that, but you know, it's something that the geodesic dome, which would be totally out of character with the neighborhoods.
Buckminster Fuller would roll over.
It's Falmouth. Well, maybe, but look at the one in Falmouth, he had all the adverse publicity.
That's right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Croll. Okay, Mr. Hilliard, if you could please call... Okay, Mr. Hilliard, if you could please call.
Case number two oh one nine dash sixteen. Blair E. McCabe, Thomas J. McCabe, and Elaine Sweeney, through their agent, Thomas Moore of Thomas Amore Design Company, have applied for special permit to build additions and alterations onto a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard's, Section three twenty-five, Table Two, Area Regulations is set forth in Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-eight, Section Six. Property is located at twenty-five Grayneck Lane, map eleven, parcel X eight dash six, in the RH dash one zoning district. We have one piece of correspondence from Katie Tanalia, senior health agent. Case two thousand nineteen dash sixteen. In nineteen ninety-eight, the Board of Health provided five variances for septic system setbacks. The approval came with the following conditions. There shall be no increase in square footage or number of bedrooms in the dwelling. Two, there, there is no provision for garbage disposal. Three, variances must be recorded with the possible registry of deeds and the Howard's town clerk. Four, the system shall be inspected and maintained if necessary every three years. Therefore, the proposed project will also need to go before the Board of Health for reconsideration of variance conditions, as well as a request for new variance for septic setbacks. At this time, I cannot make a recommendation without the approval from the Board of Health. As of May ninth nineteen, May ninth, two thousand nineteen, the applicant has not filed for a Board of Health hearing.
Yes, sir, if you could introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, Thomas Moore from Thomas Moore Design Company, representing the Cadets. And we're here to request a special permit to add on to the existing house. This project, I think, falls under the Gale case also, is that we're intensifying a pre-existing non-conforming conditions. We're not encroaching any further into any setbacks that are already, already compromised or already non-conforming, so. The project itself, it's a, right now, it's a, a little cottage, that, the house was built in nineteen forty-nine. The Cadets have owned it since nineteen eighty-five. And it's a tiny place, and we're looking to expand a tiny place with some small additions that complement the existing house and provide a little bit of extra space for them. Yeah, as far as the Board of Health, I did meet with Megan Eldridge, the health director, and went over this project with her, and she's told, talked to me in regards to the steps to, you know, apply or go to the Board of Health for, for updating those, requesting, I forget what she called it, but.
Conditions?
Conditions for, for the, as far as updating the variances that have been granted, so. In her mind, she told me that she would be in favor of this proposal, as far as this, and we are filing paperwork to go to the Board of Health, so. We also will have to go through the Conservation Commission because we are within a hundred feet of the wetlands. And our engineers are preparing the paperwork to do that, too, so. We are not increasing any bedrooms. Right now, it's a three-bedroom house. It's, it'll stay a three-bedroom house. We're moving around one of the bedrooms from the back to the front, expanding one of the other bedrooms, so. Other than that, I think this is, you know, a little cute little proposal that will have a couple of additions that will kind of fit nicely in the neighborhood.
Okay. Anything further, sir?
I think that's.
The only thing I would state is, of course, if this, if the board sees fit to approve it, and I stamped the plans, if the Board of Health or the Conservation Commission makes you change anything, you're going to have to come back again. Voting with Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hederstedt, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Armstrong. I will not vote on the case. Mr. Hilliard?
Thank you. We're asking, you're asking to increase a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Maybe you can, I'm looking at it the way you would have it in front of you, so I'm, when I refer to my left.
Okay.
What is the, where is the initial non-conforming structure? Is it the deck that's four feet off the line, or, and I assume the deck has always existed?
The deck has always existed, the house, the dwelling.
Six point nine corner, right.
The dwelling, if you're, the fourteen-foot dimension.
Fourteen-foot dimension.
On the side, which would be.
Oh, no, okay, that's all right. I just want to stay on the left, because you're only, you're asking for a special permit only to add the proposed addition, that is eight plus or minus feet from the side. Is that correct?
No, there's actually, if you look, there's three additions total.
Okay.
Yeah, there's that one.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, proposed addition on the right, yes, yes, yes. And then the proposed addition. The proposed addition on the right lower, I believe, conforms, is that correct?
Doesn't conform to the side property line.
It's only fourteen feet there, Jim, on the side, on the east side.
All right, well, I'm sorry, because it isn't shown down in that.
It's up above.
Okay.
Yeah, we just stayed on the same line, the existing.
So I guess my question, let's go back on the left side for a second, that twelve-foot. So if you're extending a pre-existing non-conforming use, I'm sorry, structure, you're actually, I don't, I don't know where the extension is. I mean, you, you, there's a line that starts at six point nine feet, and then it goes straight out to the, all the way out to Grayneck, if we follow that as a straight line. You're adding a box in there that creates a new, from where I'm looking at it, a new non-conforming structure, not necessarily an extension. Unless your argument is that once you have a pre-existing non-conforming structure, you can go any direction with it, assuming that's what you're doing. Instead of going on a parallel line to it, you're, you're extending it like to eight feet closer.
Correct.
And I hope I'm not being too confusing.
Trying to, trying to follow it.
Okay. And the same is on the other proposed addition, that is ten feet. Are you adding that? That's, that's a new, you're, you're adding that ten feet so that it now is fourteen feet from the property line?
That's correct.
And as of now, it's twenty-four feet. If you don't add it, it's twenty-four, is that correct?
If I, if we didn't add it, it'd be twenty-four, yes.
Okay. And the, by adding that, the requirement is twenty feet?
Yes.
Okay. So you have it now, at least you have it there, and it is fourteen feet. I, I know where it's fourteen feet. As you go back, it's fourteen feet to the side of the house, so that exists. The house is fourteen feet at one point.
Yeah, 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 correct, yeah.
I get that, okay. I'm having a, I'm having a problem processing the fact that the way this non-conformity is being extended. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure that the way it's being extended is what the intent of the Gale case is, but.
I, I think also in your zoning bylaws, if you, if we've got a pre-existing non-conforming, which is fourteen feet to the property, I'm going to take the driveway side. I can extend that on the same line.
Exactly.
Which is exactly what I'm doing here on that particular side of the building, is extending that non-conformity, you know, frontwards and backwards.
I, I get that more than I get the.
The opposite side?
The, the piece on the other, on the left side, which is eight feet off the line. That, that's the one I'm having an issue with. I get the parallel line on the right side. I, I don't have an issue with that with Gale case, but I do on the left, but.
Well, I guess part of what I was looking at on that one is extending the front of the building out in that direction.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, it's already non-conforming from the street, so I can extend that. And it's, it's not getting any closer than the, the other six foot, the four-foot non-conforming area. So that's, I think, how we came up with that.
Thank you, nothing further?
Yeah, I think that's permitted under three twenty-five fifty-four because the extension along the same line of the existing encroachment is, is only one example of increasing a non-conformity. If you go like the prior sentence there, and look at it, three twenty-five fifty-four, eight-two, it says if the Board of Appeals determines that the alteration or extension will increase the non-conforming nature of the structure, which of course it will, because he's non-conforming on the line there at six point nine. Notes such alteration or extension may occur unless the Board of Appeals issues a special permit for alteration or extension after finding that the alteration or extension will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformity. And I think that's what he's saying he's looking at. And then the, the next part says it will increase the non-conforming nature, and it would include such things as, and it lists the three, and one of them is structure continuing along the same non-conforming line without increasing the encroachment. So I think he's just looking at the three twenty-five fifty-four, and I think, it is a little confusing, but I think.
Thank you, I have nothing further.
With his rights.
Okay.
Ms. Muller?
Yes, I had the same concern as Mr. Hilliard, that eight-foot addition, that change there and that eight-foot non-conformity appears to me to be a new non-conformity, but I agree with Mr. Ryer's interpretation. Also, I'm, I'm curious about the relevance of the letter from the Board of Health citing the nineteen ninety-eight. There shall be no increase in square footage, and yet we are seeing an increase of five points in the building coverage.
And then that will be, yeah, what we'll be having, having to go back to the Board of Health to get those variances updated.
Okay. I, I have to say I am sympathetic to these folks. This is a small house, and when you consider the magnitude of some of the extensions that we approved, this is, this is a modest request, but I, I think the health department deserves to be consulted, and the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, and I did talk with Megan Eldridge, as I stated, and she would be in favor of this, is what she told me.
Okay.
Whether the Board of Health is or not, it may be a different story, but she would be.
Mr. Hederstedt?
I think there's some confusion on that proposed addition on the bottom right-hand side of your drawing. The eight and the ten point five is the size of the addition that you're putting in, not necessarily the fourteen point zero foot feet from the, from the set, from the, from the lot line. That's an eight by ten point five foot piece you're putting in there, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other than that, I have no other comment.
Mr. Donahue?
The only comment I have is more than the health department. You got it squared away. I have no problem with all of it.
Mr. Armstrong?
Just a question in regard to the health department. If, if we were to approve this and they disapproved of it, did not approve their, then they would have to come back.
Well, he'd have to work with them because he can't get a building permit. The way it, we used to put a condition on our cases where they had to go and get the rest of the approvals, and we stopped doing that because there's no need to, because unless the applicant satisfies all of the requirements, in this case, not just us, but the Board of Health and Conservation, they won't be allowed to get a building permit. So that's sort of the safety valve. And, right, do you check them, or does Ray check them himself?
With community development, all of the permits come in and they have to go physically through each department and be reviewed, read, and approved before they move to the next department. So if it got to Board of Health, or, or Megan in Board of Health, and she didn't approve it, it wouldn't go any further.
Did they actually get something, that stamp that comes back, that the Board of Health would approve? Did they stamp plans or something?
No, it just either, what happens is that particular building application will come in once approval is from all of the different departments.
Okay, I see, so they sign off on the.
They will go and sign off on that and just moves forward.
Right, and that's the fail safe.
They can't get a building permit without approval.
They have to get the sign off. So I just wanted to make sure they signed, so when it came back to you, or Ray, and/or Ray, it clearly indicated that they had signed off.
They're so thorough. They write, I mean, when they hold it up and have to ask for additional material, we get emails from them saying this is being held in the Board of Health until such time as these additional materials come to our department. And, and when they're satisfied, that's when it moves to building.
I see, appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, and that's sort of, you had a similar concern, so that's why I took the time, just so we could understand it. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this case? We'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, twenty seconds, so we'll close the public hearing discussion. Mr. Hilliard?
Excuse me, I have no comments.
No further comments.
Mr. Hederstedt? Okay, I think this meets the requirements both of the bylaw, three twenty-five fifty-four, and also the Gale case. They're not creating a new non-conformity, just increasing the existing non-conformities. And certainly, there will be no substantial detriment to the neighborhood. I don't know about the restriction on this one. They're, they're right at the end of the street, but it's, it's a mighty.
These are, these are additions slash reconstruction?
Yeah, they're.
I don't know how substantial they are.
I, I don't know. When do you anticipate doing your?
Not until the fall, anyway, so.
After Labor Day?
After Labor Day, yeah.
So no restrictions?
I, I guess it's okay, because it's right at the end. Did you go down, it's right at the cul-de-sac, and after Labor Day, there's probably not going to be much traffic there.
So we don't need to put a restriction?
I don't think so because of this location.
If anybody else feels they need to, that's fine, too.
The only comment is one is that the condition, what the health, the conservation have met. They got to go through all that, they're not going to get it done before then, I guarantee.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
No, we're not going to be able to get it before.
Mr. Armstrong? Okay, we'll entertain a motion in this case.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The zoning board of appeals on this date approves the application on the case number two oh one nine dash sixteen for a special permit to have, to, to build additions and alterations to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. Application was pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard's, three twenty-five, Table Two, Area Regulation is set forth in MGL, Chapter Forty-eight, Section Six. The property is located at twenty-five Grayneck Lane, map fourteen. I think, no, map eleven, parcel X eight dash six, in the RH one zoning district. And this approval is based upon the applicant's submitted documentation for the planned alterations or reconstruction of a non-conforming single-family residential structure. That, and is in accordance with the Gale case and that there are no new non-conformities, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. The case, the property is located in an area where there is no need to put a restriction on traffic during the building permit, during the period in the fall. So at that point in time, that's it for the approval.
Okay, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, Mr. Armstrong, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, special permit granted.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Hard no.
Kathleen?
Hard no.
Comes a time.
No, 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 this is my stuff, sorry. Just, I was only giving you back.
Okay, Mr. Hilliard?
Thank you.
If you could call our next case, please.
Case number two thousand nineteen dash seventeen. C. Craig Conti has applied for a special permit to construct a screened porch onto pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard's, Section three twenty-five, Table Two, Area Regulations is set forth in Mass. General. We have one piece of correspondence, Board of Health, 8 Tenalia. The septic system was installed in 2005, was designed for a total of five bedrooms. The proposed screened porch meets all required setbacks. As the plan is proposed, the Health Department has no issues or concerns.
All right, sir, if you could introduce yourself, please.
My name is Craig Conti. I am the owner of Don Way. We've been there thirteen years this summer.
Could you give me a little more volume? I'm hearing challenged here.
Okay. We've had the house, it'll be 13 years this July, and we haven't done anything, you know, most of the enhancements have been to keep things updated inside and so forth. We haven't changed the footprint in any way up until now. The, what we'd like to do basically is use the same area that we currently sit out on and have meals on, especially when, you know, the children and grandchildren are down and come to visit, but screen it in to keep away the mosquitoes in the summer, to keep the rain off on some of the days, and to keep the yellow jackets away in the fall. So it's not, I don't know, I guess it shows that we went from 41.5% side coverage to 42.0. I'm not quite sure, I guess because of this overhang, whatever, but it's almost the same exact size as the patio itself. It will actually come away from the, you know, won't be quite as close to the property line as it is, and then it comes out from beyond the back of the house about three or four feet, and that's where the door goes in. So it's a 14 and a half foot by 16-foot screened-in porch. Like I said, it's actually, I don't know, pretty straightforward, no new bedrooms, you know, nothing else to...
When are you proposing to do this?
I don't know, it'll probably be done in the fall, just, but, you know, we had talked about trying to get the deck in maybe earlier, but at this point, I don't think you have to, a contractor that I'm working with is pretty busy anyway right now, so...
Okay, we're going to have, the voting will be Mr. Hilliard, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hederstedt, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Armstrong. I will not vote. And just, I'll let Mr. Hilliard start, but just tell us all what this little sliver in the front is here on Don Way?
That was, when I first went to propose for the whole thing, we were going to, I don't know, you've been by the front of the house, I take it, and you see there's a brand-new window in the front, a box bay where there used to be a bigger bay window. What we were going to do is come out even with the house, you know, put like a separate peak, and cantilever that out, pick up a little bit more room in that, in that room. When, way back when we started this, and they said that was nonconforming, too, because of the 22 inches that it would have stuck out, would have still only been that 13.8 feet. With everything else, it just kept sliding and sliding, not being able to get to that project, and that window riding out and the front needing to be, you know, re-sided, I kind of gave up on it, and I got a building permit to just put in, to replace the bay window. So I do have copies of the building permit here and some pictures of what it used to look like and what it is now, if you want to see that, but...
No, it's okay, I was just, I was curious what it was.
Yeah, it's, so that's not really going to happen.
Okay.
We've, we went ahead and, matter of fact, just finished it up last week.
It's not going to happen?
That proposed addition, that little piece there is not going to happen. It's a bay, the window's been replaced, though. The window did happen, but it's, the window's actually smaller.
That proposed addition will not be part of the plan?
Right. Yeah, so when I submitted this, when it got to the point that we had this all done, ready to go, and we proposed it and it got denied, and had to come to the zoning board, at that point, the stuff was all drawn up, but I went and just applied for the window. And actually, the bump out, as it turned out, we could have actually done it, because it's, it was going to be cantilevered and it was going to be less, supposedly there's something in the building permit that said...
Could have been done, yeah.
You could go 22 inches out and so many feet over, but when we looked at trying to cantilever it, the, things went the wrong way, so now we were going to have to rebuild six feet in, and it...
Gotcha.
It became complex. We said, just do the window. We need this thing done before the summer, so we did it.
More trouble than it's worth.
Right, exactly.
Mr. Hilliard? I'm sorry.
So it's really just this, this piece in the back, and that's, when I wrote this up, I ignored the one in the front, because we...
Well, I think we can proceed with these plans, because he doesn't have to build it. I mean, I'm not going to make him go get another plan. Mr. Hilliard?
Thank you. My, one comment is, I noticed that you're actually pulling back the patio from the side yard, where you're going to frame it, so you'll make it more conforming as opposed to less conforming.
Correct. And I think it'll look better, too. It'll come in about, whatever it is, on the other side of the molding, about, you know, six inches, eight inches, whatever it is.
And the screens are portable? You'll be taking them out at times?
Uh...
I mean, not that it matters, I'm just, I noticed that it was on the plan to get removable screens.
Yeah, well, I think because what we've seen lately to make it easy when they get ripped and everything is you end up having them maged within the metal, and then you can put them in. It's not that we've necessarily taken them out, but it's that when they break it, we don't have to, you know, have it rebuilt in place.
I see no legal issues with your application and your, it clearly fits within the zoning bylaws of Howard, and clearly fits within the legal case everyone seems to be referring to here, is the Gale case.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that.
It's helping you even though you're not.
Right. Is it G-A-I-L or G-A-L?
G-A-L-E.
I'll look it up sometime, just for curiosity.
It's every zoning lawyer's dream case.
That's right.
It's in their favor, right? Ms. Muller?
I have no questions.
Mr. Hederstedt?
I have no further questions.
We might want to put the traffic condition on here, because this is, this is pretty tight. Even though it's a small...
He's got to put a, got to put sonnets in there.
Or the par, or all the vehicles, or the construction vehicles on the property, which would be fine, too.
That's, that's not a problem. As you notice, I have a big, I have a little driveway in the front, and then a big driveway comes in around to the side.
You've got plenty of room now.
Oh, okay, I didn't see it on here, okay.
Yeah, we park all kind, you know, when the kids and grandkids come down, we never have, we never have a car on the street.
I guess when I drove over in front, I didn't notice it. I saw the other, the paved drive.
Yeah, okay. The other thing as far as site coverage, too, you see next to the existing garage where the, where that big driveway comes in, and you see that little piece that goes back that walk, that was all part of the, you know...
Okay.
That, that doesn't, if you went by the property, that doesn't exist. You might have noticed there was some new sod put down and everything else. It's, my wife never liked that. She thought it was a waste of time. She didn't understand why we had that there. And in between everything else, I do, and I took, I had to tear that out, and we resod it, so we've reclaimed some, I had two, some area there as well that's not reflected in this plan, so maybe we're back down to 41.5 or so.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue?
Certainly no detriment to the neighborhood. Then I think it's perfectly fine, and hope enjoy it.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Armstrong?
No comments.
Mr. Conti, are you saying that contractors could bring their vehicles up in this other driveway?
Yes. You know, when I was, when we were working on that window, I just, I mean, I was parked out back, and the contractor I was working with parked in the, the front driveway and had everything open, and we just did from there, so...
Yet it's not just, it's not just the traffic, it's the activity in the summer. That's a tight little street.
So you think we ought to put the restriction in?
I do, I do think so, out of consideration to the neighbors.
Because of the neighborhood? Yeah, I agree. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application? There ain't no one, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the public hearing's closed. I'll take a motion in the case.
You, Mr. Chairman, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the state, under the case, has approved a special permit under the case number 2019-17, based upon the applicant's submittal of documents for planned alteration and reconstruction, and in this particular case, a screened-in porch and proposed deck and open-frame trellis to, to a nonconforming single-family residential structure that is in accordance with the Gale case in that there is no new conformity and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Because the property is such close location, residential location, there'll become no substantial demolition or construction or external or substantial landscaping during the period 20 June, 30 June 2019 through Labor Day 2019. I assume you won't, you'll finish it in this year, not in 2020?
I hope so, but...
Okay, thank you. I'll take a second, please?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hilliard? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit unanimously granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Conti, I hope your family enjoys that great change.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you for not shooting me when I went in your yard today and went in the back and...
No, I, I didn't even notice, I was in and out.
I thought there were people there, but...
Yeah, well, did you go, was, was the lawn cut, was it uncut before or after you went in?
I don't know.
Because I got, I had some things, I was in and out around noon time or so, I cut the lawn.
That's pretty free.
Oh, the next month?
And then I was...
Well, we efficient.
Then I was back in and out again a couple of times, running some errands, but...
Are you on vacation?
No, I think I have those, we'll talk about that.
Okay, is this... Ooh, I think I'll be here, though.
So William Crowe's batting three for four on this next, next set of hearings.
Hey, this, this, hey, should we get a percentage of Crowe's, you know, Crowe?
Rods with bold, not with foul.
Should, should we get a percentage of what is, of his business? What do you think?
Oh, we got another one on Grayneck.
Okay, so just a quick note if we're done with all of that.
Goodness gracious.
So this is June's agenda. I was waiting to see if we had any cases continued, but you'll pay attention to the final case?
Mm-hmm.
It's different. It is an appeal of a nonenforcement.
Okay.
Okay, so just pay attention.
Failure of the Buildings Inspectorate Act, you mean?
That is what they're suggesting.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
It's...
Appealing. You're going to have in our package all the correspondence and...
Anything that comes in. It's a thin pack as it is right now, except that there's a very long history that has been written by the attorney representing the people who are applying to you.
Okay, so we'll have that, we'll have something from Mr. Chusley?
Ooh, wow.
Oh, stop.
I presume, I haven't, I haven't got anything right now. He has been asking for counsel, a comment from town council.
Okay.
It will probably be attended by a number...
Yeah.
Of people, so it'll be the last case, and it may go on for a while, is all I'm...
Shayla, I'm confused by this. Okay, are Justin Brackett and Jared Brackett ones missing it? There's a T, there's a...
Yeah, they're the ones who've taken it.
I'm sorry, did I miss the T on the second one?
Justin Brackett and Jared Brackett.
I will fix that before I send you the paper. Add a T, everybody, add a T.
Thank you. And are they the managers of Perks?
That's what it says there. They're the managers of 541 Main Street LLC. That is the Port Restaurant.
Okay, and they're appealing a nonenforcement?
They, okay, so a brief, just without, I'm trying to keep it brief, they are next door to Perk.
Got it, okay.
Right, and the encroachment is a real estate encroachment or a use?
We shouldn't discuss the case.
Right, so it is just an appeal of what they're saying. I tried to read, because it's a very long narrative, it's five-page.
Okay, but you're going to give it to us, so we'll have plenty of time.
Right, so we'll soon have those available as quickly as possible, and anything that might come from either town council and/or the building commissioner with regard, and there may be other correspondence from neighbors. So I will give everything in advance?
Mm-hmm, thank you.
As much as I can.
If you want to go into the Cape Cod Times of the Chronicle, and, you know, search Perks, there's been a lot of things going on with it. You might want that for background.
So they are the managers of the Port, not of Perks, that's all I wanted to know.
Correct, so when it came in, I had trouble deciding who, what is, what's the application address?
Okay, sure. Want to pass these down?
I'll be sure to be out of town then.
I didn't pass this down, Jim. I sent one down to Kathy.
What is this?
Well, we're going to talk about this for a minute. Shayla, did you have anything else?
Here.
No, just when we get to the approval of minutes.
You got two pieces.
That way you're done with this.
Okay.
Is this anything I need to see a picture of?
Two? You want, see what we're doing here, Jim Shayla?
Okay.
Okay, this, this goes to that opinion of counsel that we got, and Jim suggested it might be a good idea if I just did a little sketch, so we could go over what's happening here. And the first one says Gale case, which as we know is a special permit. So this would show on the left side of the existing house, a nonconforming structure, 14 feet. So if they enlarge that to make it only four feet from the sideline, that's the Gale case, special permit, because they, if you look, I've got them complying everywhere else there. The next one...
Wait, wait, whoa, 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 wait a minute. You're talking about the house with the existing, whatever it is, on the left-hand side, and you're telling me that they're proposing to extend that?
Right.
And making, instead of what the, the nonconformity was originally, 14 feet, they're going to now make it four feet?
Right.
Right. Extension of an existing nonconformity.
Right, right.
Okay.
That's the Gale case.
All right.
Special permit. But if you look now at the Deirdre case one, it's sort of got the same thing, although it doesn't look like it, but that's my drawing, but I have them nonconforming on the left at 14 feet, but now they want to, on the back of the property, put a proposed extension that would be only five feet from the property line, whereas they, at the back, they meet the 20 feet.
Am I missing something?
Otherwise.
No.
Do you have the one?
No, you have two of the same.
I don't have this, I got the same identical one.
You got the same one, yeah.
Okay, ah, okay.
So that one, that's now a new nonconformity, and this was what the opinion of counsel said. Even if at the five-foot line, you took the corner, the left corner of the existing, which is only four feet, and you could draw it straight, so it would intersect with, where I've got that little arrow, five feet, that would still not be the Gale case, because even though you're extending the existing line, you're actually creating a new nonconformity on this backside by being only five feet.
And does this go back to that little house where the people wanted to put the little sunroom on?
Exactly.
Yeah, where we go along.
Exactly, right. And that's why I, I didn't think I was correct in that, but I wanted to get an opinion of counsel after the fact.
That's why I was asking Bill Crowe, I'm sorry, not Bill Crowe, the last gentleman who took, what was the initial pre-existing, pre-existing part of the house from which we were taking an extension?
Right.
And if you look at it the way they did it, they didn't... And if you look at it the way they did it, they didn't take it from the side, they took it from the front.
From the front. And I...
But he was, he was nonconforming already on that side.
Yeah.
So that was the first, the Gale case here, where I proposed their nonconformity to begin with at 14, and they're making it bigger. They could have done it down below with a gap, instead of right next to the existing. If you dropped it down towards the road and put the same proposed within the setback, just drew a great big one, that would still be the Gale case.
Right. I agree.
Because it would be...
Yeah.
...an extension of the nonconformity on that.
Of the 14, of the 14, 14...
Of that side of the house.
Right.
Exactly.
I agree.
Whereas the other, the Deirdre, you know, let's go with that gap. That was already in compliance at 20 feet. So now they want to go within, you know, create, that's clearly a nonconformity, council has told us. So it's confusing. I think I confused it further with that case.
And that can, that can be done, but with a variance.
Right. With a variance.
Right.
And of course, variances are very hard to gather. And you haven't been here, but this, this board is very exact, that they really meet the requirement. Some boards get them out willy-nilly, but that has not ever been our practice.
It was fine this way, but it wasn't...
But they happen.
They, we do grant them.
One to two here.
The next time we get in that situation, if they have council, I'm going to ask council to bring us some cases on minor dimensional variances. I've got one case, but I'd like more.
Sure.
The courts have been much more lenient on minor dimensional variances. So even if they don't meet the other requirements, if it's a couple of inches, six inches, the court's not too alarmed by it.
As long as it's not detrimental to the neighborhood.
And doesn't derogate the intent of the bylaw.
I for variance.
So in advance, they'd have to know that and apply for a variance, yeah?
Well, if they come in and they don't have that, we'll send them back.
And you have to go back.
We'll give them a continuance, and they can come back. Now, if it's person without counsel...
Right. Special permit, then they might...
I don't know what we'll do. We'll decide that at the time.